Acknowledge the traditional owners of the land on which we're all gathered. And personally, like, it's just so nice to take a moment and to feel that ground underneath us, to feel that sense of connectedness to the earth. So I just wanted to acknowledge the owners in past, present, and emerging. So Serena, just briefly, we won't go into too much theory. I'm more of a practical person, to be honest. But just as a bit of a base for you, roughly, there's so many different opinions of what mindfulness is and how we define it, but it's just helpful if we think of it as having two components, one part to do with connection and one part to do with our attitude. So in terms of that attention component, we just want to know where our attention is and we want to prioritize where it is, e.g., on my voice or on our breath, etc. And then we just want to guide it and hold it there repeatedly, no matter how many times it wanders away, because these things on top of our necks called our heads, they have a brain and a mind, and it's constantly wearing away. Sometimes that mind is helpful for us and sometimes we just need to gently unhook from all of the crap that it tells us. So that's probably, yeah, we'll move into. I thought today we would do the loving kindness meditation to help with some restoration for all of us, and it's really beautiful. They find that for loving kindness meditation, so or self compassion, the pioneer is Barbara Fredrickson and her Positive Emotions and Psychophysiology Lab over in the US. And through really well-designed studies, so kind of like gold standard, they show that we're actually willing to increase our, we're willing to increase taking action when we are in that space of kindness and compassion and gratitude. And their theories are that we're lessening the activity in our amygdala, which is our fight and flight, our reptilian brain that's been there for thousands and thousands of years. So we're lessening that activity from that space and hopefully connecting more to our emotional responses and our higher cognitive functioning, which is more of our frontal lobe. So we connect then to endorphins such as our feel-good endorphins and serotonin being one of them, and then also our connection hormones. So on that note and preface for our loving kindness meditation, I'd like to encourage you, you can do this lying down if you want. You can also do it seated, whatever your preference is. While we're doing the practice, you're more than welcome to turn your cameras off if that makes you feel more comfortable. I'll leave mine on and probably use a lot of hand gestures as I'm talking along the way because of Italian blood, I think. But whatever suits you the most, you are more than welcome to go with that. So if you are seated, I invite you now to push your feet firmly into the ground. And just take a moment to perhaps notice the sensations or those pressure points when you're pushing your feet into the ground. So is there more pressure through the heel, the toes? Where do you feel that sense of grounding coming from? Perhaps it's not only noticing the feet pressed into the ground, but also the chair upon which you are sitting and is supporting you right now. So there could be perhaps a sense of grounding, a sense of support from that chair or couch. And perhaps before we close our eyes down, if you feel comfortable to do so, just pausing to take in the room in which you are practicing or the setting in which you're practicing. And perhaps just using your curiosity and see if you can notice something that you've never noticed before. So whether it be textures on a table, perhaps how the light falls upon an object. Hopefully, it's not noticing dust or dirt on the floor that you need to vacuum up because we'll save that for later, but just, you know, using that curiosity to notice something different that you've never noticed before. And now just gently closing down the eyes, if you feel comfortable to do so. This will help just to enhance our focus on the meditation itself. However, if closing the eyes down doesn't feel comfortable for you today at this point in time, perhaps you can just gently lower your gaze and pick a spot about a meter or so in front of you and just gently focus on this spot. Now you could perhaps just gently rest your hands in your lap in a comfortable position and feel the connection between your hands and your clothing, the skin touching various pieces of clothing across your entire body, whether it be your top, your pants, whatever it might be. Feeling that texture of clothing, touch the skin, perhaps against the legs, the arms, the chest. Now just shifting your focus, your attention to perhaps any sounds that you can hear in the distance. Perhaps it's some birds squawking or traffic now that, you know, in Victoria we've opened up. Perhaps it's the sound of children playing, the sound of machinery or construction, whatever it is, just tuning into one sound and focusing on that for, you know, maybe three to four seconds before shifting to another sound. And we're not looking to label sounds as good or bad, annoying or loud or unhelpful. Just simply exploring these sounds almost as if like you're a scientist and you're just curious. So is there a specific frequency of this sound? Is there perhaps any silences between the sounds? Can you identify the pitch perhaps? Now just shifting to sounds perhaps a little bit closer to where you're practicing. So within the same room. And again, just slowly shifting from sound to sound after a few moments. Now perhaps even seeing if you can hear the sound of your own breath. Or perhaps even if you can feel that breath as it enters and leaves your body. Perhaps you might notice it as it enters and leaves through your nostrils. Or perhaps there's the rise and fall of your belly. So just tuning into that feeling of the breath. We're not looking to control the rate or the rhythm or anything like that. Just notice as it enters and leaves of its own accord, which can be easier said than done once you start focusing on it. Perhaps now seeing if you can not only feel the breath, but perhaps if you can feel that pulse, your heartbeat. Perhaps you might feel it in your chest. You might feel it at the wrists, in the neck, or, you know, wherever. There's a lot of places in the body that we can tune in to feel that heartbeat. It can be really subtle at first, and if you can't feel it, that's totally fine as well. Kind of like to use the term fake it till you make it. So if you can't feel it, maybe just tune into that chest space and imagine that heart beating, that life force for our body. And it's from this heart space that we would like to come from, from this practice, for this practice. And this practice, this loving kindness meditation, if it's the first time you have practiced this, it might feel a little bit odd, a little bit clunky at first. I would encourage you to give it a go at least a few times before you say, yeah, no, and that's not for me. But sometimes people connect with it straight away. We all have different experiences. And this practice, this meditation, we're going to keep it nice and simple. So we're essentially going to be sending well wishes to a bunch of different people. And we're just going to be repeating the phrases, may you be happy and may you be well. So to start with, I'd like you to bring to mind somebody who you love dearly, who you're really close to, whether it be a family member, a friend, somebody who's had a really significant impact in your life, could be a pet. They could be still with us, they could be passed. Generally, whoever you thought of first is the person to go with for the practice. So just bringing that person to life in your mind's eye and creating a really clear picture of them. Perhaps they could even be sitting next to you right now. So what are they wearing? Can you notice how their hair's done? And perhaps bringing to life, bringing to mind why this person is so important to you. What are some examples or some memories that you've created together of where you have felt that strong connection? And as we do this exercise, you may notice yourself smiling from time to time, and that's perfectly and definitely okay. So now that we have this person in mind, potentially from the heart space, but we really want to mean the words in our well wishes as we pass it on to this person. So this loved one that you've picked, repeating the phrases, saying to them in your own head, may you be happy, may you be well. Repeating at your own pace and your own rhythm, may you be happy, may you be well. Really feeling, feeling those words and the importance of those words and meaning it when we say it, because this person's important to us. May you be happy, may you be well. And now let's shift our well wishes to a neutral person. So this is someone that, you know, you might know by passing, see them at the supermarket checkout or the gas, you know, the petrol station. You know this person, but you don't know them well. You don't like them, you don't dislike them, they're just a neutral acquaintance. Probably not your tax person, not helpful there. So this neutral person has their own story, their own life's journey, their own hopes, their own dreams, their own families, their own values, their own Netflix binges. And now we're going to send our well wishes to this person. And we're going to mean it, so may you be well, may you be happy to whoever this person is at whatever stage of their life's journey they're on, wishing them well from repeating, may you be happy, may you be well. And just repeating the phrases a few times at your own pace and your own rhythm. May you be happy, may you be well. And while we don't really specifically know this person, we do want to send them our well wishes. They deserve happiness, they deserve to be happy, they deserve to be well. So just one more time repeating, may you be happy, may you be well. Now we're just looking to turn our well wishes a little bit closer to home. We're going to wish ourselves happiness and wellness. And generally, we are our own harshest critic. And so I would argue that while we may feel uncomfortable sending well wishes to ourselves, we probably deserve it the most. At least not as much, at least we deserve it as much as anyone else. So wishing to ourselves now, from our own heart space, may I be happy, may I be well. And perhaps if you're struggling to come in with that authenticity and really meaning it, it can be helpful to conjure those feelings, those thoughts, emotions from when we were wishing that loved one our well wishes and the happiness. So coming from that same space, may I be happy, may I be well. Just repeating a few more times at your own rhythm, your own pace. May I be happy, may I be well. And just once more, may I be happy, may I be well. And now finally, for this last part of this meditation, we're looking to expand our well wishes. So recognizing that we're all part of our own various communities, whether neighborhoods, states, country. But we are part of a species called humanity, human beings. P.S. We're called human beings, not human doings, so what we're practicing right now is great. So perhaps wishing the communities we're connected to and expanding our well wishes to our communities close by and perhaps across the world. May you be happy, may you be well. Because at the end of the day, when we look at it, in essence, that's what human beings are looking for to have, not only moment to moment, but in their lifetimes, is to be happy and to be well. So may you be happy, may you be well to this worldwide community that we do find ourselves in. And perhaps, I mean, you might even like to extend that to sentient beings, whether it be animals and plants and Mother Nature in general. May you be happy, may you be well. Remembering that we're 99.93457% the same as everyone else in this world genetically speaking. And we're connected by waves and particles when we dig deep, deep down. So wishing everyone, may you be happy, may you be well. And perhaps now just taking a moment to bring awareness to the body and check in, has anything shifted for you as a result of this practice and spending the last 10 minutes or so practicing happiness and wellbeing and sending well wishes to others? And perhaps there might not have been a change, and this is totally okay as well. So now just gently wiggling your fingers and your toes to bring a bit of movement back to the body, perhaps even having a bit of a stretch, whatever feels comfy for you. And in your own time, just gently and slowly opening your eyes, bringing yourself back into the room in which you are practicing. And whenever you would like to rejoin me, you're more than welcome to turn back your camera back on. We'll have a little bit of a chat. Beautiful. Welcome back, ladies. Does anybody feel comfortable to share how that practice went for them?
I had a bit of head nodding, Hannah. Soon as I shut my eyes and I got into my breath really, really easily and I relaxed. You've got a really lovely voice, I really liked listening to you. So I found myself with a head nod pretty quickly, but I stayed with it the whole time and I really enjoyed it. Yeah, thank you.
Beautiful. Thanks, Amanda. I'm glad that I don't have one of those. I know some voices when I've listened to some meditations and I'm like, oh, dear me, oh, dear me. So I'm glad I'm not one of them. And if you had have fallen asleep, that would have been completely okay as well. But well done for sticking with it.
For me, I've realized that I need to be at home doing it and not at work.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, but it was relaxing and definitely worthwhile. I've just got people walking up and down the corridor and I'm just going out tomorrow.
Yeah.
But other than that, it worked well.
You know, it would be fabulous, two things, mindfulness and leading from example, to for you to be mindful, mindful even in a public busy place. And secondly, for people to look in and see you with your eyes shut relaxing, maybe it would give others permission to take a break too.
Yeah, fair point.
It's, I know when I've done, when I first started practicing in public places, like in parks or just when I was in the city in a meeting and sitting on one of the tram benches or whatever it was, then I would notice all of these thoughts about how self-conscious I was. And it's just like, huh. And then the impacts of those and the emotions that are associated with those and where I felt those within my body. And so then using that curiosity to explore that. And then generally you kind of get to a point where you're like, yeah, I'm practicing. I don't care what other people are thinking. But thank you for sharing, Serena. Anything you wanted to add, Nicole?
I just, I enjoyed it. I like meditation, but I just suddenly realized how tired I was.
Yep. It's when you give yourself permission to stop, I think the body can be like, I really need a bit of rest right now. And so yes, if you do fall asleep, it's my gift to you. But this next one that we're going to do is called the four, seven, eight breath. And it is one of the most widely used breathing techniques to assist with sleep. So if I put you to sleep during this one, you know, that's fine. It's supposed to help with that. But just a few things before we do get into this breath. So I'll explain how it works. It's a really simple one. Essentially, we're breathing in for the count of four. We're holding for the count of seven. And then we're breathing out for the count of eight. Hence why it's called a four, seven, eight breath. If you find that the pace is too slow and you're struggling to, you know, breathe out for eight counts, I just recommend working with your own ratio. So instead of, you know, breathe in two, three, four, hold two, three, four, blah, blah, blah. So it could be breathe in two, three, four, hold two, three, four. So you just change the ratio, the speed, but the ratios will still be the same. When we're breathing in, if possible, it's advised to breathe in through your nostrils. There's a whole lot of goodness. I mean, the nose is responsible for over 36 different functions in the body, including filtering the air and exchange of gases to help moisten and soften as it's coming in and just so many ridiculously amazing things. I mean, when we look at the breath, we're breathing on average 20,000 to 30,000 times per day or every 3.3 seconds. And so if we can breathe correctly, because there's statistics around, perhaps up to 80% of the population aren't breathing correctly, then I would argue our quality of life will probably significantly increase. And I mean, how long can you go for food without food for, like a couple of weeks? You can go for drinking without a few days. You can go without heat for a few hours, but you can only go for a few minutes without your breath. So kind of, I think it's a bit of an important one there. So we're breathing in through our nostrils and then we're holding. And then when we breathe out, we're breathing out through our mouth. And we're looking to put our tongue on the roof of our mouth behind our teeth. So it's like that gummy bit just behind the back of your teeth up there. So putting your tongue up there and you're kind of making a whooshing sound as the air comes out. So that's how we do it. Now, when we're starting out, we're doing a maximum of four rounds. So it literally is going to take about 60 seconds. And we do that twice a day for the first month. By doing that, we'll become, we'll decrease our reactivity. Hopefully, it'll help us get to sleep a little bit better, will help with our digestion and perhaps reduce a little bit of our hot-headedness. After we've been practicing in that way Uh, after we've been practicing in that way for a month, you can then increase up to eight rounds of breath. But, um, for the four, seven, eight cycle, but you never want to do more than that. That's a pretty powerful breath is what I'm trying to emphasize here. So let's give it a whirl. Um, and then I will expand it a little bit, uh, as well at the end, um, to bring in a little bit of awareness for us as well. So, I mean, given it's a breath for sleep, you are more than welcome to lie down for this one. Uh, it can be done lying down or seated. So whatever your preference is at this point in time. So if you are seated, just once again, pushing your feet firmly into the floor, resting your hands in your lap. And if you can perhaps just sit forwards a little bit on your chair so that you're not resting up against the back of it, because we're just looking to imagine that there's a piece of string slowly pulling our spine up towards the ceiling. And so by doing this, we're looking to open up our chest cavity and really be able to enhance our breathing capability. If you have chosen to lie down, uh, perhaps it could be helpful to place, you know, a pillow under the knees for some comfort, perhaps even a blanket. Let the feet flop out towards the sides. And perhaps just gently rest your arms by the side of your body with your palms facing up. So if you haven't already done so, I invite you to close down the eyes. Again, if this doesn't feel comfortable for you, isn't accessible, just picking a spot about a meter or so ahead and focusing on this. And once again, bringing our attention and our focus to the breath. We're not looking to control it at this point in time. Just noticing, perhaps if it's slow or fast, shallow or deep. When we breathe in, are we breathing into our belly? Are we breathing through our chest? What points on the body are moving, shifting or changing as you breathe in and breathe out? Now, as we practice this four, seven, eight breath, I will count us through the four rounds. And if you do find that this pace isn't working for you, you're more than welcome to go at your own pace. And it is a breath where it's not loud, it's not overt. So we don't have to be worried about, you know, if we do have those colleagues working, walking past and we're, um, just sitting here breathing, we're not going to be doing, making a whole lot of noise. So just beginning now and we'll breathe in together, one full breath in. One full breath out. Now breathing in, two, three, four, holding, two, three, four, five, six, seven, breathing out, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, breathing in, two, three, four, holding, two, three, four, five, six, seven, out, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, breathing in, two, three, four, holding, two, three, four, five, six, seven, out, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, breathing in, two, three, four, holding, two, three, four, five, six, seven, out, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Now just letting the breath return back to a natural rhythm, not looking to control it. And perhaps just taking a moment to see if there's been any shifts, any changes, or if anything has stayed the same. Now perhaps just gently scanning the body. And as we scan the body, we will look for some tension and look to release any tension that we do find. So perhaps beginning with the head, bringing our attention and focus to our heads, noticing our jaws and perhaps any tension there and just giving ourselves permission to relax the jaw. Now moving down towards the neck, relaxing the neck. If we find any tension there or shoulders, just letting the shoulders fall away. Now the arms, so just gently scanning the upper arm, your elbows, your forearm, your wrists, the palm of your hand, the top of your hand, your fingers. Just looking for any tension. If we do find it, perhaps just bringing the breath into that space and giving permission for that area to relax. And now coming back up from the arms into our chests, so around our collarbone and our upper chest and our upper back. So our cervical and the beginning of our thoracic. So just scanning these areas. If we're finding tension, you could, you could explore it for a moment or two before just gently breathing into that space. Bringing some relaxation there. Moving a little bit lower down now, so towards our, our diaphragm, so our main breathing muscle in the body and then our, uh, our lumbar spines and our abdominals, our pelvis, now coccyx, our pelvic floor. So just scanning this area of the body and releasing any tension that you might find as you gently scan. Particularly like if we notice you're kind of sucking in your stomach as well, which unfortunately females tend to do a bit more than males. So just making sure that we're relaxing that stomach area. Both perhaps a bit more superficially and then also a little bit deeper as well. Now perhaps moving our attention, now focus to our hips and our upper legs, our knees. So releasing any tension we may find in our glutes, our hammies, our quads. Now just scanning our calves and our ankles. And moving down towards the feet. So the feet hold a lot of fascia which connect the whole body. So not only your lower limbs, but it connects right to the top of our bodies. So perhaps just releasing any tension that we find in our feet at this moment in time. Now just taking a moment to maybe take a step back, uh, from the, and look at the entire body. So just sitting or lying here relaxed. Pausing for a moment in gratitude for taking the time tonight to, to give yourself this gift, this pause in what is generally a very crazy society. So now just gently wiggling those fingers, those toes. And really taking your time to bring some movement back into the body and opening your eyes. Cause I appreciate that one can be super relaxing if you guys are still awake uh, and still with us. Thanks, Nicole. Beautiful. So Nicole's just had to go to pick up her daughter. Um, so welcome back, ladies. You're still awake. So that's, you know, something. Uh, any, um, any reflections or comments on, on that practice of the four, seven, eight breath? Um, and I did, you know, chuck in a bit of a body scan tension release at the end there.
Just that it's harder than it looks. Or that it sounds.
Yeah. And I found that I don't think I could fall asleep to that because I found myself getting out of breath a little bit.
Yep, the four, seven, eight or the body scan, Amanda?
The four, seven, eight. So I do quite a good breathing. Like I usually breathe in eight very comfortably, eight in and eight out. But the four eight, I find a bit more challenging because I want to breathe in some more. So, um, I find that quite, um, constraining to stop at four. So you breathe deeply and longer. Yeah.
Hmm. It's a bit of an art in terms of taking in that oxygen, but then controlling it for that out breath, given you have got that uneven ratio. Um, and some different volumes that are happening there, uh, when we're working with that. So it can be, um, yeah, interesting to try and control that out breath. Um, I think an initial tendency can sometimes be to dump the breath. And then you'll get about six and you're like, ah, I ran out.
Yeah. I don't, I don't often get that. I usually can go, um, quite well, but four, yeah, I feel like I need more air than that.
Yep, yep. It's, uh, you will find if, if you do choose to keep practicing that specific one, that it gets easier, like with anything and training, you gain familiarity and, uh, not, not confidence, but the ability to do four, seven and eight. Um, but yeah, thank you for that, that feedback. And Serena, any thoughts from your end?
Probably the same thing. I found, yeah, I was a bit out of breath, but, um, I think I've got to have to practice that one. It's going to take a bit of practice to get disciplined enough to, to follow it to the rule. Yeah. Especially the out breath. I was struggling on the out breath.
Yeah, it has to be very slow and controlled. I mean, I've probably been practicing that one now for um, three months and I kind of only feel like I'm just getting into a bit of a groove.
Yeah.
Um, I can provide the link for that video. Um, it's a really well-known powerful breath, uh, which can just be a little bit helpful for some guidance and rhythm, et cetera. But yeah, if you are struggling on that out breath, then just change the ratios. Uh, sorry, the speed, um, of it. So just count in a little bit faster and hold, et cetera, et cetera. So very good. Any?
Can I ask, Anna, just to?
Yep.
Um, how, what about doing that one with gyre breathing? So more in the throat breathing and less out the mouth like you described? Did that make a difference?
Um, I think it can help to control the flow of the air as you're exhaling, definitely. And personally, I think I do that unconsciously.
Yeah, me too. I, and I thought of, as soon as we went into it, I thought I wish I'd asked you with, whether we can do gyre breathing or whether to consciously, uh, exhale out the mouth, but I, I ended up just doing the gyre breathing. Yeah.
Yeah. So Serena, your gyre breathing is, um, a basic way to explain it is, for example, if you have glasses or, you know, in winter, when you look to unfog something and you go, and so at the, you're kind of forming a bit of resistance at the back of your throat. Um, and you can do that over time. You segue into not only doing it with an open mouth, but being able to do it with a closed mouth as well for not only your exhale, but also your inhale. And it's almost as if, as if you've got the sound of an ocean at the back of your throat as you're breathing in and out. So it's called ujjayi. You can also call it resistance breath. There's a lot of names for it. Um, and it can be a helpful method to control the pace that you are expelling or inhaling that breath. Um, so yeah, it's a, it's a good one, but when I first started, I went way too hard and then I started giving myself a sore throat. I'm like, oh, hand, typical, typical, you know, just smash it as hard as you can. And I think that's why I, I really identify with these practices so much because I have to take off my competitive hat. So very good. Well, thank you so much for all those reflections. Um, and I hope tonight has been, has been helpful for you guys. Uh, and I wish you a very peaceful evening and may you sleep very well after.